This conference will now be recorded.
You let me know when we're ready.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna be gonna get going. My name is my name is Christopher Pia. We're calling directly scheduled by thirteen two thousand twenty town council meeting to order. It is eight oh seven P M. With that, I'm gonna ask Mr. Counselor Harden for the prayer and pledge. Harden?
Most graciously and heavily, Father, we thank you for an opportunity to give you thanks. We thank you for an opportunity to come together as a town and not only a town, but a town that is looking forward to changes. We also pray for the mayor and her staff, and we pray for those that we have lost during COVID. We also pray for those who are, you know, in the midst of, of, you know, violence, in the midst of racial unequality. So we ask that you touch those people and that you give them the strength to move forward as a community. And we also pray for peace because peace is important. So we ask that you touch us all. You ask that we ask that you touch us all to work together as a council and as a town and move the town forward in a respectful and responsible manner. And these things we pray, amen. Peace to you all.
Thank you, Counselor Harden. The pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, before we jump right in, I'm gonna ask the council, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien.
Can we have a moment of can we have a moment of silence for Margot's dad, another World War Two veteran we've lost?
I thank you, sir. I was literally about to just say I would like to ask everyone for a moment of silence. So our very dear, very dear friend, Margot Picquette, who was our council clerk. Her father passed away, Mr. Michael Savco, and I'd like to ask everyone for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you all.
Thank you, everyone.
My condolences, Margot.
Thank you.
With that, I will take up the first item on the agenda with approval of the minutes of the of the June eighth, two thousand twenty, and special meetings at June sixteenth and June twenty second.
Chair, if I would make that motion, please?
Counselor Harden motion by Mr. Harden. Do I have a second?
Second, Bill O'Brien.
I heard Mr. O'Brien. Any discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote. We will not do a roll call vote in this. All in favor, signify by the way.
Aye.
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 Chair, any opposed? He passes. Margot, I believe nine zero. I believe Mr. Can is Mr. Can on? I don't know if he jumped off again.
Brett, I'm here.
All right, Greg. Okay, so ten ten zero, Margot. Caller twenty three is Greg. I just saw it light up. So Dave or Margot, if you don't mind. All right, um, you know, thank you, everyone, for having patience tonight. We we were trying. We were attempting to to give it options for everybody, whether it be in person, going back and following all the strict guidelines under the governor's executive order. Unfortunately, some of the tech and audio just didn't work out, and that's fine. Wanted to make sure everyone had the opportunity to choose, but that's why we we were able to get through the forum and thank you for everyone who called in and put their input in. And thank you for everyone for making a last minute change to make this council meeting start at eight o'clock on the go to. We're all going through this and learning day by day together, so I thank you all for that. We were planning on having a presentation done by the Stratford Bracettes. Counselor O'Brien, I don't know if you spoke to Counselor O'Brien. I know you had spoken to. There, sir.
Yeah, Bob Barrett, Chairman of the Board Barrett.
Okay.
And he's asked that the mayor attend the opening of the tournament on August sixth to make the presentation at that time.
Okay, so we will circle back on that. The Bracettes were gracious enough to reach out to to thank the mayor and the council for beautiful renovations. It's been mostly completed at the field. If you haven't seen it yet, take a ride down there. It's it's really something. So we will. I will kindly ask that we will circle back to that item at a later date. Thank you. Next item on the agenda under Communications Bills, petitions and remembrances. Item three point one, monthly tax anticipation note or a TAN report. So if anybody remembers when we did our budget meeting in May, one of the items that I did bring up is after speaking with the administration on is that basically because the council voted in to authorize the TANS or the tax anticipation, which were one of the two options given by the governor under the COVID for the tax relief. We voted this in in May or June, excuse forgive me on that on the date. But one of the things that I did bring up, and I want us as a council to be going and looking at this and having a conversation with every month from a cash flow standpoint of the TANS. For for those of you don't know or may not remember, I mean, again, this is Don Sabo. Just to give us an up to date monthly now, meaning that this just started with the new fiscal year of July one. There's probably not a tremendous amount of activity. This is gonna be important that I want to keep on the agenda every month going forward so we can play it to speed. So, Mr. Timmy, wanna start with that?
Thank you, Mr. Pia, or Chairman Pia. We have been working the last month or so preparing this report where we have it organized and set up in a formula base where we're gonna be able to update it and make sure that the council is aware of the town's cash flow position as we go through now until the end of November, when the governor's executive order will will end. Everybody who applied for the tax anticipation or the tax deferment, which is why the council passed the tax anticipation note. When we passed the budget, we included in there and prior to passing the budget, we authorized, the council authorized us to go out for up to forty million dollars to cover any gap we had between taxes not received from the month of July through the month of November. So that that's a brief history on it, and Dawn can give you our new finance director. Don Sabo will give us, give you any details and talk about the actual report which was passed out to the council members.
So, Dawn, it's Chris Pia. Hi, can you hear me? I could. Don't worry.
Yes.
I guess I'll just start off by by just saying, and I'll start with this maybe every month, is if you could just give us how many people have how many people have we gotten in the TANS? What is our our outlay, just from basic metrics so far?
So, as we had twenty seven people that.
Go on, your audio is very poor.
Five. For the deferment. Some of those included businesses. Um.
All right, Dawn, hold on.
That were up, that were.
Hold on one second, Dawn. Hold on one second, Dawn. You can restart.
Is that better? Can you hear me?
Much better. If you could just restart your report, please.
Okay. So, we had twenty seven approved deferrals. The deadline for the state deadline was July first. So we don't anticipate any more at this point legally. And to date, when this report was done, our collections, if you look at the report, and I'd just like to mention our new treasurer, Giselle Moore, worked really hard on putting this report together, which was given to us by Peoples as a template to use, and we've we've adjusted it for our purposes. But you'll see under the revenues on the bottom of the page, there lists state receipts and then taxes. And so you could see what was collected to date. And that's just for the first few days. It's really only about five days of collections. We are slightly tracking slightly less than we have last year, and that, we believe, is because more people, you know, people got their message to mail in their taxes and not come to town hall due to COVID and social distancing. So there's a lot more mail coming in, and I'm sure, as many of you know, the mail has been a lot slower to to be delivered in general. So we're still going through those taxes. I think by the end of the month, we'll have a much clearer picture because the majority of the escrow tax payments come in the last week of the month, and that, as you know, is the bulk of our tax payments. So we'll have a good picture by the end of the month of where we stand in terms of tracking compared to previous years. But so far, it it it's slightly lower.
Okay, so I know this was gonna be the first month, but I wanted to make sure we started with it. So it sounds like next month will kind of be the we'll have a lot more clarity on the true numbers. Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
And if anybody has any questions on the report, they can feel free to email or call me.
Thank you, Dawn. I was just gonna say that.
Okay.
Any counselors have a question for Dawn on this at this time? No? Okay. We'll we'll look forward to that report next month. Dawn and Chris.
Okay. Thank you.
Greg, Greg.
Question for Dawn, please.
Go ahead.
Question for Dawn.
Greg, go ahead. You go ahead.
All right. Dawn, around the next to the last week on the report, actually, October second, there's a twenty five million dollar daily credit, which is maybe offset below at the bottom of the page by tax, the twenty five million dollar tax. If we have a hundred and eighty million dollar projected tax revenue and in this year's budget, we should be collecting, let's say, forty five million dollars every three months. Can you compare that? Compare that, let's say, expectation, you know, people pay ninety million dollars in the first half of the year to this twenty five million dollar collection in October?
So, thank you for that question, Greg. So, the the taxes, the estimates put in here are are percentages, a little lower than normal to be conservative, that we put in. So you'll notice on the week of seven seventeen, there's three million listed. Then on seven twenty four, there's thirty million, because that's when we get a large amount of payments. On seven thirty one, eighteen million and so forth. So the date, so the tax payments are mostly due August, the first week of, by the first week of August. Some people make the majority of their payments in July, and then the second tax is due in January. So people make most of their payments in January. But because of the deferral, we put in a estimate in October. It's a larger estimate than we we probably need to estimate that down, move that down and put more in earlier in the month. But I was trying to be conservative when we first did this on estimating more people were going to apply for deferrals than they actually did. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. And one more question, please.
Go ahead.
Sure.
When do we anticipate retiring the fifty million dollar short term bond?
Well, we we didn't apply for them yet. We just received an authorization from the council if needed that we could receive tax anticipation notes. But we're going to meet with, or we're in touch with the bond council and our bond advisor on that. And if we need to do it, it would probably be in September.
Okay, I'm I'm glad we haven't gotten it yet because this cash flow position looks like a good projection, if you will.
Yes, it looks much better than anticipated.
And Greg.
But we're prepared.
Yeah. And Greg, to that point, Greg, and good, thank you for that, and Dawn, thank you for that response. That's why I want to monitor this every month so we could see those projections every month.
Thank you, Chris.
No problem. Any other, any other counselors have a question for Dawn on this? I didn't hear any before. Okay, Dawn, thank you very much. Excellent work. Next item on the agenda, item three point two, the Main Street sanitary line. Mr. Timmy, I can see you have Mr. McCarthy.
Good evening. Mo McCarthy here.
Hi, Mo.
How are you? Basically, this all started last Tuesday. We received a call for a sinkhole about a hundred feet north of South Avenue on Main Street. The sinkhole was the size of a basketball. That usually indicates a either storm drain or a sanitary line cracked or broken. Before we opened the road, because it's a state road, we camered the line from the closest manhole, which was about two hundred feet away. We found the top of the pipe was missing a piece of of the pipe itself. The pipe is made up of four foot section, five foot sections of ceramic tile, which is very brittle when it gets old. It also wears at the bottom from the constant water flow and chemicals chemicals going through it. So the next step was to open up the sinkhole and see what we had. We did that. We found that the a piece of four foot section of pipe was cracked and broken. We made a temporary repair. Now, we've got to fast forward to next month. The state of Connecticut is is gonna start milling and paving Main Street from somewhere near the airport up to Barnum Avenue. If we were just to make the repair, a couple of things happen. One, the repair is about six feet in the ground, which is very close to the surface. Usually, they run eight to ten feet. The second part of it is when, after they milled the road and they start, they come in and put asphalt down, they use very large vibratory rollers to to roll the new asphalt. It's almost a guarantee that you're gonna lose another piece of pipe just from that. And the pipe literally collapses into itself. So the decision was made by me to replace four hundred and twenty feet of pipe between two manholes, the one just north of South Avenue up to Fallon Drive. We we are in the process of cammering all the rest of the pipeline from South Avenue south to the airport, just to be sure. But in this case, we took the pipe out. We're in the process of taking it out. It should be wrapped up Friday, and then we're good to go with that section. There are nine structures that are tied into that sanitary main. It's an eight inch main that that flows south to the water pollution control plant. That was the thinking and and why I made the decision to change it because if if we left it alone, they paved the road.
Everybody should mute their phones. Everybody who's not speaking should mute their phones.
Thank you, ma'am. Everyone who's not speaking, please mute yourselves.
Okay, so the the thinking also was that they paved the road, and we have to reopen it six months down the road because of another broken pipe, because of rollers, the vibratory rollers. We have to, number one, replace the pipe. Number two, we have to pave from curb to curb, which is not just to cut a hole and patch it. By state guidelines, we would have to repave that section of road. That gets very expensive, to say the least. So in any event, this will be wrapped up by more than likely this Friday, unless they run into a problem. They don't anticipate any. And then within two weeks, the state will be in milling the road, and two weeks after that, they'll be paving the road. If we do find any other pipe that is cracked, depending on how much is cracked or damaged, we can either line it, reline it, or replace it, and it depends how serious. And, you know, if it's only cracked, a reline will work, but if it's cracked and collapsed, it's not. We don't have anything showing that yet. The camera will follow us that in the next few days.
Okay.
So that's the report on that. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Bottom line, Mo, this is Chris Pia. We'll have that. You'll have that line report, the TV, excuse me, report in the next few days.
We will.
Okay. Any counselors have any questions for Mr. McCarthy?
Greg can, if no one else.
Go ahead, Greg.
Thank you for the report, Mo. I'm thinking in terms of, we just did a video, the tie in bond inspection of all the sewer lines and the infiltration, et cetera, study. I'd like if the team can circle back for the next W P C A meeting and maybe help us understand how this particular may, could it, could we have caught it earlier? And how did it get by us? Just trying to learn from what we did before in terms of preventative maintenance.
I'm not sure that you could, but certainly we'll ask the question. Ceramic, round ceramic pipe is very brittle. One day it could be good, the next day it's it's collapsed. You know, it could last for a hundred years, but it's it's kind of hard to tell. They might have been in there with the camera, you know, a few years ago and and seen nothing, and then this develops. Road vibration raises heck with pipes, whether they're sanitary or water mains or storm drains. So just trailer trucks vibrating, and that's a heavy traffic road. And not all of the pipe is deep.
Greg, what I'll do.
We will ask the question.
Yeah, I'll talk to Mr. Casey, and we'll we'll circle back on W P C A on the on the line, on the TV reports. Okay. Any other questions for Mr. McCarthy on on three point two? No? Okay, Mo, I believe, are you gonna be also handling three point three?
I am.
Go ahead, sir.
On Friday, three July, we had a severe rainfall in Connecticut, the worst of which was in in this neighborhood. Sikorsky Airport in the US weather reported four point nine inches of rain in two hours. That's overwhelming for any system, whether it's sanitary, stormwater. In in addition to that, at the same moment that you had the head rain, it was at moon high, the ocean was at moon high tide, which raises the the water level underground substantially. In some places in the South End, if you put a shovel in the ground, the width of the shovel, you'll get water. We've had it happen to people working on lines. In any event, on Hamilton Avenue, there's a chamber for two storm pumps. There's a belly in Hamilton Avenue, which I believe you're probably familiar with it. The catch basins in that belly go into this, drain into this chamber, and then the pumps push the water down to South Avenue into another storm drain system. Well, what happened was Murphy was working. One pump burned. It it short circuited and literally burned, cooked, and the controls weren't good. And then very shortly after that, probably a half an hour, the other pump, the the drive shaft slipped on it, and it locked up and shut down. It tripped a breaker when it shut down. Both of the pumps pump eleven hundred fifty gallons per minute, and they're seven and a half horse power pumps. So once they were down, we did have a technician respond. They could not be repaired that night. We didn't have the parts. We didn't have another motor. The motor had to be taken out. The pump with the bad shaft, we were able to repair the next morning. They had, we had a crew there, and I was there till about noon time and got that straightened out. The second pump that burned, we did have the pump windings taken care of and rewound, and we're still waiting for a couple of relay controls to to turn those feet, one pump on and off. They're doing by the end of this week the latest. So both pumps will be back up and in service. One is now. Nothing really could handle five inches of rain in two hours. Two fire engines couldn't do it, to be very honest with you, at a thousand gallons a minute. That was basically that issue. Both of those pumps are twenty years old or better. And in a in a very near future capital budget, we're gonna have to come up with a budget number for you and replace them. They're due. But right now, they're, they will be both operating, and we do maintain them. We 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 check them at least twice a month. There's three different stormwater pump stations in town, and and the crew goes around and tests them and checks them and lubricates them, make sure everything is working. So they're not ignored. That's about it for for that. I don't have any other explanation other than the pump shut down, and and they they broke down.
So, Mr. Mo, Mr. McCarthy, thank you for the update. But my first question to you is, and, you know, obviously, you have a complete inventory of all the pumps in town. As you you just said that, for example, this one, this is checked at least twice a month as probably standard operating procedure. What is the, what, how, what's the range of pumps in in terms of age? Do we range from anywhere from between one year to thirty years? I mean, what, and then what, what point do we automatically have to get a new pump? Is twenty five years the cutoff? Just kind of give us some perspective.
You you really shouldn't go more than twenty years. Right now, the three pump stations, one is at Platte Street, one is at Hamilton Avenue, and the other is at Ferry Creek. Ferry Creek, same situation, but much larger pumps and and run by generators. They're maintained monthly and and serviced at least twice a year. Those are gasoline engines or diesel engines. And then the other is electric pumps over off Platte Street. Those pumps are are slated for replacement with this Army Corps of Engineer project that's going on over in Frog Pond Lane. They have to redesign those pumps to pump out water that will sheet from parking lots that are gonna be created in the Frog Pond Lane area. So those are relatively new. They're maybe eight years old at the most. And and they're also checked. All the pumps are checked at least twice a month.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any question, Mr. McCarthy, on this item?
Yeah, yes, I do.
Yes, Mr. Taveras.
Thank you, Mo. I appreciate it. I saw that the that they were out there the very next day, and I appreciate that. My phone was ringing off the hook with that flooding. As you know, for many years, that part of Hamilton Avenue, as it dips, has always been prone to flooding. I was even using my truck as a blockade to keep people from trying to drive through, which one did and turned their BMW into a U-boat. But I also would like to, so that's good. I wrote down a lot of what you said so I can take back to those constituents there that that problem is on the way to be alleviated. But we also have Harding Avenue, which there's a section of Harding Avenue that has a dip in. That street really needs to be regraded because it is prone to flooding. Street really needs to be regraded because it is prone to flooding, even without heavy floods, heavy rain, rather. And it's been damaging the infrastructure of the homes and the property there. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, with the lower part of every street, there, there is a flooding problem there. So you know, with those areas, is there somewhere that these people can find some kind of relief from those, from those areas that are prone to flooding?
There probably isn't. And I don't mean to be the bearer of bad news, but number one, you're at sea level in that area of town. It's the nature of the beast. Number two, if you have high tide, if you go out into the backyards of, of, we did work down, we were working down on, on Benton Street one day, and, and it was high tide and we had a broken storm drain. It wasn't raining, but it was high tide. Put the shovel in the ground about six inches down, we were getting tide water, ocean water. But that's how high the water is. Now, put that together with five inches of sudden downfall, there's nothing you're going to do. You, you could have pumps galore and it still wouldn't, wouldn't do any good for you.
So in Paul, I heard, I heard your point too.
I mean, can we look at it? Certainly we'll look at it and see if there's something that could be done. We're not saying that. We're just saying, please don't expect too much because it's next to impossible.
So Paul, what I'll say to you too, and, and I was just, I was letting Mo finish there. If you, you know, put, put that list together for him and send it, send it to Mr. McCarthy, to his point. Let's look at it, you know, for case in point too. There's Third Avenue and Fifth Avenue down, down here in Lordship are the same problem that you just explained in your district. And I've been, you know, we've been looking at that for years. People just are, they're at sea level. So again, let's look at it, let's build the list. So why don't we do that? All right?
So you're, you're going to send it through the mayor's office, counselor?
And, and thank you, mayor. And I just want to say that contacting Michael Downs, if he's on, you know, Mike, thanks for responding. I, I really appreciate that because, you know, again, this was a very, very traumatic experience when people are calling and saying that their basement is an indoor swimming pool. But no, absolutely, Chris and mayor, definitely, and Mo. I appreciate that and I'll get right on it.
Yep, send it through the mayor's office, absolutely.
Hey, Chris, through the chair.
Mr. Harden, go ahead, sir.
I just want to let you know, when Wally Kadim was the councilman of that area, we actually did a survey of the property. And we came up with this synopsis that that area was like what we call a cup because it was sublined. And we had this flooding on, you know, West Avenue, Surf Avenue, and Hamilton Street, and then Orange Avenue. And we realized because it was below sea level, you know, there was nothing that you could do. And if you were to do something, it would have had to be to dig up the street and put a pumping station down in that area because it's, again, it was below sea level and it was considered a cup area. And most of the residents that lived there have been there for several years. And, you know, and they're, they're kind of used to it. And then some people are not used to it. You know, I have a lady on Bow Avenue who, when it floods out, she's been there for 30 years, but every time it floods out, she calls me just to make me aware of it. And, and so I'm, I'm definitely aware of that situation, Paul. But unfortunately, that's a cup area. And it's a low, you know, low, low area and it's below sea level. And those areas tend to take on a lot of water. And again, those are some of the areas that we should be mindful of. But you know what, Mother Nature, you know, how could we actually fix it unless we were to put in a pumping station in that area? And I don't know if that was financially feasible or I don't know if that would be appropriate, you know, again.
And you, what I.
Then you need to talk to some of these people that just opened up their tax bills and get their tax raised.
Mr. Taveras.
Some kind of effort done to show some kind of.
Mr. Taveras, hold on. Hold on, one second.
So, so through the, through the chair, through, through the chair.
Mr. Harden, hold on, timeout, timeout. No one's recognized at the moment. Okay. Mr. Harden, your points are well made. I understand that there was a feasibility study done. And Mr. Taveras, your points are well made, I heard you. And that's why I said, put it, get an email through the mayor's office. We will look at this, right? And that's the best way to go about looking at these things, okay? I wanted to be clear on that, all right?
So I, I, through the chair, through the chair, can I make a statement really quickly? Paul, I know that on, on several occasions, you made this issue about taxes. We all pay taxes. And, and yes, there are points where things in the town don't run appropriately. And we feel that for the things that don't run appropriately, we should not be paying taxes for that. So I, I understand that that's what you always say, well, when people open up the tax bills, everybody opens up the tax bill and we're all disappointed with it sometimes. But we have an obligation to the town. We also have an obligation to our property to pay taxes. Whether, whether the function of the town is working appropriately or not, that's our obligation.
So here's what we're going to do.
Now you let him talk. Now you just let him go ahead and end it. Now you're going to cut me off?
Mr. Taveras, I'm not going to cut you off. I will recognize you, sir, but please just respectfully ask to be recognized, as Mr. Harden did, I will do for you. And then we're going to move on from the Hamilton Avenue because we're deviating from what the original line is. Go ahead, sir.
Let's move on.
Okay, we're going to move on. Net, Mo, thank you for that. I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. All right.
You're welcome.
Next item on the agenda is item 3.4, Center School Property Status Update. So wanted to put this on, so we basically keeping tabs on everything. So last month, as everyone knows on the call, the proposal group, excuse me, the group that went through the RDA, presented their proposal to the council. So I'm just going to open up by saying, when we signed in that, you know, that day in June about a month ago, that was the first time I had seen their proposal, as all of you. The mayor was gracious enough, it came, came to me and said she'd like to get this to the council and most importantly, to the public, so we could start to see what they are doing. As, and I'm not going to go through the entire timeline, I'm going to allow the mayor to do that because I want to be accurate with the facts. But the bottom line is, we, you know, I thought it was, I thought it was a nice aesthetically looking proposal. I had never heard of the group before, I've done some research on them. I like that they had some history in, in terms of incorporating historical neighborhoods into their work. I thought that was a plus. One of the things that I immediately, when I got to, was the financing was not a fan of. When I saw 17-year, or excuse me, 15 to 17-year, again, this is a proposal, okay, for everybody listening. And the job of the RDA was to vet RFQs, RFPs, and then bring them to the council for us to act on it. And that's the way the government works and that's what we're doing. We're doing our job now. As I just said, and I'll be, I'll say it for everyone to hear, I was not a fan of the financing. The $1 a year, as many people have mentioned, was an eyebrow raiser to me as soon as I saw it. And as it sits today, I am not a fan of, of the, of the proposed proposal. That was my initial gut reaction. I, I appreciate everyone, councilors, as well as the public who was listening tonight and those who are not listening. I actually, that night, I asked everyone to reach out to their councilors to give good feedback, whether you're for or against it, what you thought. And you'd be very surprised, I got a lot of people from around town that I grew up with that called me and wanted to weigh in. And I appreciate that type of feedback. And I hope, and I obviously know that a lot of the councils here have gotten some. So with that, I want to have a discussion on this. I'd like to have the mayor just start off with what the town did, the timeline, the implementation through the RDA with the charrettes and so forth, and how it came to this. So Mayor Hordick, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Chairman Pia. And I wanted to thank the town council and the RDA commissioners for going through this process for the last several years. It's really important for public trust and for, for public investment that we hear back from constituency. And this is, all the comments that were made today and the comments that have been emailed are taken just as that, the opinions and the value from each of the constituents, the residents, and those who are concerned or saw something that they happen to like. And in this case, because we started this in 2017 and the RDA had gone out for RFQ twice, we felt that if we delayed it any longer, then it wouldn't be a fair representation to the public and to the council for what was going, what had transpired so far. So in 2017, the redevelopment agency formed a transit-oriented development steering committee to organize outreach to the community for the potential for Stratford Center redevelopment. And the committee was tasked with assisting the town in Stratford with three open houses and charrettes. And these meetings were held at different sections of town. So besides these three, there were also two others held by a local community group called Stratford Forward. So we had a lot of community input in this. The steering committee partnered with Metricog, which is a multi-discipline planning agency, and it represents the six surrounding area towns, and National Development Center, NDC, who also brought in to develop the outreach educational materials for the development site and the transit-oriented development area. Based on the feedback from the community, the town assisted by Metricog and NDC drafted an RFP in 2018 for the solicitation of qualified developers. And the selection of the developer for the TOD planned at Stratford Town Center was the former Center School site. The town only received one response to the RFP in 2018, which was a proposed TOD residential development. And it was done by a very large, well-known development company. It's a national firm. But because there was only one, the RDAs thought that we should go out and try to redraft the RFP and see if we could get more interest and solicitation. The second version of the RFP went out in the summer of 2019. And the town received three responses and those proposals were on the website. The one applicant that was selected from the RFP committee to present to the redevelopment agency was Zenith. And that, their presentation included workforce housing, which is the housing at the percentage of market rate to attract professionals, which had the desire, which was desired also from the community. In the charrettes, especially the one in Center School front lawn that I participated in, several people talked about affordable housing for those that were young professionals and also downsizing professionals who wanted to work where they had transportation to and from work for them. So retail was also included in the feedback. Also, there was art space included as well. But the developers, this particular developer, and some of the ones that we did the walkthrough with, and there were about seven or eight of them, didn't visualize retail on that particular site only because of its close connection to Stratford Center that had a lot, a lot of commercial retail already established. So of the three proposals, Zenith, Zenith, the one that was presented was the most aesthetically pleasing, respecting the historic surroundings and including that workforce housing component. So although the RFP committee and the RDA were not comfortable with that financial stack presented, nor were they comfortable with the dollar for the property, nor was anybody comfortable with the abatement of 15 years since we had just passed a tax incentive plan where the largest, longest abatement was for 10 years. The RDA, and I felt it was really important for the public, for the transparency and to the council to, you know, get a feeling for where we're going with this and if this was going to be accepted or not. Because why, why waste more time if nobody liked this plan? And I think we heard pretty loudly and clearly that people want us to go back to the drawing board and look at other things. And I think that's exactly what we'll do with the council's approval.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Hordick. And now, like I said before, what I, I want to take a couple of minutes. I want councilors to weigh in, your thoughts, I gave you mine. Any reactions to it and, and, you know, based off what the mayor just said, your thoughts to consider. Any councilors?
Can you have me, Chris?
Anybody? Hi, Kay, go ahead. Kay, go ahead.
Through the chair.
Hold on, whisper, Harden, I recognize Ms. Shake. Ms. Shake, do you, can you go ahead?
Mayor Hordick, I just want to say thank you for acknowledging, you know, in this particular instance, a very large community response from people, not just in District 2, but from across the town. I'm happy to hear it from what it sounds like. You know, the recommendation is that as a council, we collectively go back to the table and look for additional proposals for how to better the downtown area of Stratford. I have yet, in my first term of office, I have a slew of emails and phone calls from constituents and people who do not live in my district. But this is something that affects all of us, as everyone is aware of the significance of the historical district. And if not, then they should be. And what the vision is moving forward and how that may have changed because of COVID-19, as Mitzi had given some of her comments last during the public forum. I do think that that's something that we need to be cognizant of. And again, in the spirit of transparency, every single step of the way of whatever process it is of development, whether it's in District 2 or whether it's in any other part of town, needs to be transparent and have the accessibility. One of the things in this process that I did not appreciate at all was that there was a 48-hour notice of us as the council to be given some type of a proposal. And what would have been helpful was that the presentation slides and information should have been emailed to us within that 48-hour time period so that we could review it, so we could actually participate in that discussion. And as I mentioned before, during the public forum, I read my statement into the record. I'm not going to take up time to do that again. And I sincerely urge the rest of the council to be aware and cognizant, whether it's this proposal or anything else in Stratford, that we work better collectively in our communication and in the process so that we do what's best for everyone here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shake. So with that, any other councilors like to weigh in on this?
Mr. Chairman, this is Laura Dantcho, 10.
Ms. Dantcho, you have the floor, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I also listened to that presentation by Zenith. And I'm familiar with the definition of TOD. It means that this piece of property will probably involve some sort of housing. I was disappointed that it was only housing. I did like how they incorporated the row of houses on Sutton Avenue to try to blend in with the neighborhood that does exist on that side. And it's a unique piece of property because there is retail on one side and residential on the other. So we need a creative plan to, to utilize the space. But I do appreciate that they made an effort to incorporate the neighborhood, but also to Chris Pia's point. And as someone who worked with him on the, the new tax incentive proposal, the financing of this is just, my little one vote on this is, is just not going to work out. So I hope we can go back to the drawing board and maybe do something that'll benefit the entire town.
Thank you, Ms. Dantcho. Any other councilors who haven't spoken to you? One of, one of the things I'll also, Mr. Taveras, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I'd like to concur. I think that the concessions far away any of the benefits of this endeavor. You know, the one thing that I did like about was the fact that there was the affordable housing aspect of it. But still, the almost eight and a half millions of concessions, I think, far away any benefit. And I, I concur, I think that we need to revisit this to something that would be a little bit more amenable to the town.
Thanks, sir. And before I recognize any of the councilors, one of the items that, that I'm going to ask the mayor, the administration, is that the council, we will work together to do some type of joint collaboration or meeting with the RDA committee. You know, what I want to say, so everyone knows on this call, and I know many of the councilors know this, but everybody, the RDA is, is a very, is a very invaluable committee that we have in this town. We have a lot of individuals with a tremendous amount of experience in these fields that truly give a lot of their volunteer time to help. They've been doing it for years. So again, the, the resounding sentiment here is let's work together on this and go back to the board and let's utilize the extra that we have to basically make sure that everyone's opinions are brought. Any, any other councilors? Who, someone start, Mr. Harden, you had said something before, do you still want to weigh in, David?
You can pass on me. Thank you so much for recognizing me, Chair.
Yeah, no problem, sorry. But any other councilors who want to weigh in? If you want to, just make sure you mute yourself. Greg, go ahead, Greg. Yep, Greg, I got you.
Yeah, I'd like to start with a question. The, the Board of Ed Building, is there, do we have an inventory of potential places where it could be relocated?
I think that's a question for the mayor. I think that's a question for the mayor. I'll defer to her on that.
So Counselor Khan, the square footage necessary for the current Board of Ed operations is about 20,000 square feet. If you're asking me about internal, already owned properties, we don't have anything at this point that's in our control.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My, myself, to toot a horn, if you will, you know, I've got about 20 years of consulting experiences, working into underperforming organizations and doing an inventory of things that they do right and things that they do wrong and options, what are the alternatives to go forward and improve? And most of that starts with an inventory of just all the pros and cons of what you have now and where and how are you going to reach your destination? So we, we had this proposal a year ago, and I want to say this in a positive vein because I really want to enable EDC and RDA to, to be more, is maybe more effective, or at least to elicit stronger response from the development community. So our next effort, we should try to build that inventory. So if it's something like Board of Ed, if, maybe that shouldn't be on the table if we don't have a place for it to go, or we should at least know what the estimated cost of acquiring property and building a similar facility would be. So when we're looking at a net benefit to the town, because let's say RDA's prime mission was to take underperforming, brown fields contaminated and restore them and return them to the tax rolls. So in a sense, this proposal that we witnessed was sort of the opposite. We're saying they're going to restore it, but they're not only taking the Board of Ed building with no plans to replace it, they're taking that other Kapowat's home that we just invested in, and they're taking the land and all the tax abatement. So it seemed to be the antithesis of what RDA, of what RDA's mission is. But everyone's heart is in the right place and just a more cautious inventory of what our alternatives are. So maybe we put that in the R, in the RFP. Maybe we at least have a checklist in our hands so that we know what we can weigh, you know? This is a scale, this is a zero on a scale of one to 10, you know? There's a strong proposal for this item. Is it a weak proposal for the second item? We want to be more deductive when we write our RFP about what our expectations are. And so we can weigh each returned response against those expectations. I hope we do go back. The proposal in front of us has a three-year, close to a three-year timeline. So even if we just park it for now and go forward with another RFP that maybe has more metrics in it, so we can get a stronger response from the community, I hope that's something that we agree to go forward with. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Mayor Hoedick, did you, did you want to say something, ma'am?
I, I do because Counselor Khan has been present at most of the RDA meetings that I have been at. He's also been pretty well aware of what's happening on with. There. So you know, Counselor, that the RDA had phased this project in, so there was time to assess where, if the council decided to accept this proposal, the superintendent and the Board of Education have been well aware of this potential issue of them moving since prior to my election and stepping into office. So none of this has been a secret, and the plan was phased, but it's a moot point at this, at this juncture because it's not a plan that the council wants to accept or the, or the community wants to accept. So with regard to the Center School, Old Center School, which is the Board of Ed building, which was conceived as an art space by many in the community, we might have other opportunities for art space, however, this is part of the development that we had, would have put forward, and it would have been in a phased manner, which is still, in all my years in real estate and commercial management, is somewhat optimal when you're dealing with a phase one, phase two, and in this case, a phase three plan. And I, and Chairman Pia, I think Counselor O'Brien wants to speak too.
All right, hold on one second. Margot, I, Counselor O'Brien texted me. I think he had to drop out. Is, Bill, can you hear me, Bill? All right, you had unmuted caller 30, Margot. I don't think that's to him.
I don't see anybody else on my screen. I don't know what Dave Wright sees.
Dave, can you weigh in for a second?
I have caller 30 and 31, but they're both unmuted.
31 is, is Mr. Khan. If you want to relabel his name. 31 is Greg. I don't believe caller 30 is Mr. O'Brien, so if you can mute that one. 20, try 27, 28, 29, David, if you can unmute them, because I think, I'm just trying to go by deductive.
Okay.
Bill, Bill O'Brien, 29. Bill, can you say something?
Chris, can you hear me now?
Yes. 27.
27.
He's 27. Okay.
Can you hear, can you hear me now?
Yes. David, you can, hold on, Bill. David, you can just mute 29, please. Right. Mr. O, Mr. O'Brien, you have the floor, sir?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, I have you.
Okay, good. So like most of us, June 18th was the first any of, most of us heard of this proposal. And I always try to look at both sides of it, and there were some positives. I mean, as we celebrate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, it was nice to hear this was a woman-owned business. That was a plus. And on paper, it looked pretty impressive, and I thought of all the customers would bring to Stratford Center businesses. And I spoke to an uninvolved architect and a resident. He, he thought it was a pretty good-looking project, but those are some of the positives. But for me, the negatives are $1 for such a prime property is ridiculous. We just can't let that go for $1. The tax abatement is much too generous, as everybody has mentioned, and the project for me is just too dense. But I would encourage everybody to check out the Stratford Housing Partnership website on, on the town website. Check their page and review the presentation materials that are on the partnership's webpage. I think they're going to have a lot of great feedback for us as they move forward coming months. And that's all I have to say. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bill. Any other councilors who haven't spoken yet? That want to weigh in? Okay. Thank you all. I'm going to be, as I mentioned before, the councilors and for everyone listening, I will, I will, as Chair, talk about the administration on this, and we will have more dialogue on this, I can assure you, in terms of dialogue with the RDA and where we move forward. But again, the purpose of tonight was to update council, update the public, and honestly get your, get your, get your feedback. But thank you for that. The next item on the agenda, we're going to move to Mayor's. Madam Mayor? Laura, I think you, I think your audio is muted, Mayor. You're unmuted now. I believe there's a delay. Madam Mayor?
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Chris, you're breaking up really badly.
Okay, go ahead. I have you.
You're breaking up really badly. Okay. So for the mayor's report, you know, I just wanted to also share, we did, I did a little research about the occupancy rate because there's a lot of misinformation going on, and I wanted to share with you. As, as we have all these proposed development projects, you know, I was really proud of the zoning commission that they, and the developer that proposed the Christchurch development, that they listened to the community when the community didn't want the Lily Deveraux house knocked down as part of that project, and they decided to incorporate it. So when, when all this information was going on about what was occupied and what isn't occupied, 1111 Stratford Avenue is 100% occupied, and the loss at 335 Ferry Boulevard are 70% occupied. So we're, we're seeing more people, believe it or not, look at smaller housing units and apartments. And you can also see it by the real estate conveyances and talk to any Realtor in town that things are really going very, very well in the real estate market, and Stratford is very hot at this point in time. Part of it's COVID, I'm sure, part of it's low, the low interest rates. And thirdly, I like to think that part of it is our great community. So let me give you some updates on what's happening in town. We are, I, I know none of you will be disappointed that, to find out we are upgrading our servers. Blotting ship networks is working with David Wright and his team and Mike Downs to upgrade our outdated server infrastructure. The supported servers are now being migrated and tested, and we will be migrating all town departments to the new server and in a virtual environment during this week. And with the completion of that, we hope it will be done by 5:00 PM, and then we will start to make sure, well, we will ensure that the uninterrupted work for the department, staff services, residents, taxpayers, and customers. Okay. So I'd like to also tell you that after the servers are updated, we have signed a contract for Office 360, which will upgrade our email capabilities. I know all of you have been having difficulty, and I apologize for that, getting your town email. So we are, we, we hear you, those of us that also have phones, especially iPhones. I can't connect my iPhone, my town iPhone to the server and get email either, so I have to do it through a computer or through an iPad. So we feel, we feel your pain because we're experiencing it too, and we're working on a solution. The update on COVID and PPE, we have 300, 875 cases confirmed and seven, 77 deaths, and that has stayed flat since June. We have very, very good amounts of PPE. What we're looking for more, we have a little deficiency in N95 masks, but we just got a big order in today. So that was a good, good piece of that. Dawn and I are meeting, Dawn Sable and I are meeting with Bloom Shapiro tomorrow regarding the audit agreement, and we're specifically going over the items to be discussed and investigated with the BOE Board of Education Audit. We are also working with the Board of Education on an MOU to define the relationship between the Public Safety Director taking the responsibilities of the School Safety Director. And we're working with the Board on the collaborations for the reopening of schools. We have talked to them about us buying PPE because our pricing on that is much better than theirs, and as well as working on getting the, the physical plants up to date as they need to be for the opening of schools. I have some recreation updates. I'm happy to announce that the Paradise Green concerts will be starting on, well, this says July, the July 28th, which is Odd Fellows, and August 18th, which is The Void. Our playground camps are open and running full force, as is the YMCA Southern Community Center and Sterling House. The golf carts will be available to start for use on Wednesday. The pavilions of Short Beach are open for rent, and the movies at Short Beach will begin on July 24th. Blues on the Beach unfortunately has had to be canceled due to COVID-19 and the inability to socially distance. Bonnell Track is being upgraded, and they started today, and consequently, the track will be closed to the public for two weeks, but you can use the perimeter field at Penders if you'd like to walk around. At Town Hall, we officially reopened on Monday, July 6th. Face masks were, are required to enter the building. There's a walk-in service available only for the tax collector and tax assessor's office, and all the other departments are by appointment only. As for Town Hall to enter for the, to pay your taxes, it's by the tax collector and assessor's door, and then you would exit on Main Street. So you come in one way and you go out the other. Residents are encouraged to use the online resources if possible, and residents have been really great emailing all of us, asking for, asking for us to assist them so they don't have to come into the building. Our public meeting status at the chair's direction, meetings can be scheduled online or in person. We are encouraging them to be online. We are also asking that no one put themselves at risk, and they're, if they're meeting in person, they'll only be in council chambers. The beautification committee with Councilwoman Dancho have done a beautiful, beautiful job. I should say, I shouldn't say beautiful for beautification committee, but wonderful job with all the plantings at Town Hall and Paradise Green. It just makes our town look so much better, and I'd like to thank you all for all your efforts. I signed a right-of-entry agreement with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the Stratford Army Engine Plant. That agreement is going to allow the contractor, the Army Corps' contractor access to the mud flats through Hunter Haven, which is town-owned property. So there, when they do the remediation, they will need access, and then they will need access to continue monitoring to make sure their mediation has worked. On the Raymark project, the temporary construction fence and the sound blankets and the permanent highway barriers that you've seen, that's about a half a mile worth of barriers, has been constructed, and those activities have been completed. The contractors are now grading and landscaping and doing some minor work along Frog Pond Lane. The Tantera, who is the contractor, has completed bringing clean film material in to the formal contract plating property for construction for the Hall Road. At this point, the entire road is in alignment with the exception by Longbrook Avenue, but that is complete. The Hall Road will be used, as you know, for the cleanup vehicles to access the former Rebestis Memorial Ball Field. Excavation of Raymark waste from the four properties scheduled for cleanup will begin late summer and fall of 2020. And we always have these virtual meetings, and the next one will be held with EPA, the Health Department, the administration, and the neighbors, and that's July 29th at 6:30 PM. And that's, that virtual meeting can be, address can be found online on the website. We've had a couple ribbon cuttings and openings. So also, Deli on 1400 West Broadway, we had a ribbon cutting last Thursday, really, really great food. Courageous owners that opened in the middle of a pandemic. Kudos to them. And then Wing It On opened at 1640 Barnum Avenue. It used to be the old Red Rooster Deli, the former Red Rooster Deli, and they opened a few weeks ago, and I'm happy to say that I sampled some of their food, and it was delicious. I'm asking the council to agree with the reappointments of two commissioners, David Durkey for, for the Historic District Commission and Rich Fredette for the Arts Commission. And that's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Questions for the mayor pertaining to her report? First question for the mayor. Gotcha.
Can you hear Greg?
You got it, Greg.
Thanks for the report. I had four items, and I had to do timelines, you know, just an estimate on the project schedule. One would be the Exit 33. You referred to the dredging at the Army Engine Plant, maybe a, a general timeline for that. Going back to Center School, you know, presuming we're going to take another stab at this, do we have a tentative timeline on when we start it and when we'd get an RFP out? Those three items.
Madam Mayor?
So Center School, I would defer to when the council has the joint meeting with the RDA, so you can talk about what is feasible and what, what isn't. It's taken two years to get a significant number of developers to even consider proposing. And now that, well, we haven't formally rejected, but it looks like that we're not, we are not accepting the proposed development. I think we really have to think about our own financial investment into this project because, for what we want. And that's going to have to be something that you all decide of what we can temper and what we can afford to pay for in any development there. So I would defer that to the, your next meeting. Exit 33, I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, Greg, but it's online under DOT. I think the, the- I think the, the project is a couple of years, a few years at least. Um, and the third was the Army Engine Plant, is that what you asked about? So I told you I just signed the right of entry. Um, the record of decision hasn't been published yet. Um, the plan is for, once the Army Corps starts, it's mud flat remediation, it's about an 18-month schedule. And that's just for the mud flat side, that has nothing to do with the upland side. So, um, I'm hoping the record of decision will be, I'd like to say any day now, but any month now, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, any other questions for the mayor? No? Um, Caitlin, I saw your hand. Caitlin, Ms. Jake?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, Mayor Hoedick, I'm happy to hear that since June, our COVID cases has, have essentially not moved. Um, my question is, since June, do you happen to know how many residents have been tested for COVID?
I do not, but I'll try to get that answer for you. But I don't, I don't know if the State Health Department even knows how many have been tested, but I, I'll try to get that answer for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Next item on the agenda, 4.3.1, Public Works Committee. I'll entertain a motion, uh, for that item.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Can I second?
4.3.1A.
Motion by Mr. Poisson and Mr. Harden. Did I hear a second from you?
Yes, that's a second from me. Thank you so much, Chair.
No problem, second from Mr. Harden. Any discussion on, um, item A?
Um, Chris, it's, uh, it's Greg's hand.
So Greg, I was, real, hold on one second, Greg. I was just gonna ask if, um, being, just to update everybody on this one discussion, uh, Mayor Hoedick, if you don't mind just, um, bringing us up to speed and you and I had discussed this item and I just want everyone to be aware of the rest of, excuse me, the rest of the council to be aware of it.
Um, sure. So, uh, I guess back when, um, the EPA, uh, offered and the town accepted, um, the cleanup remediation strategy, as, as the idea of what was gonna go on the capped ball field, um, progressed, the proposal was made that the town would, would take, well, it's town property anyway, but the town would entertain a building for all the, um, Department of Public Works vehicles that are now stored in the lot that are all outside. And so on top of the cap, the EPA would build, um, the, uh, piers and the channeling for all the infrastructure, meaning the mechanicals, et cetera. And then, once the cap was there, we would build a building for, um, the, the vehicles. And so I wanted you to be aware that the town had entered into that agreement and as the EPA is moving forward and the Army Corps of Engineers is designing this cap, you all need to be aware and still confirm that this is the direction that we want to, want to, um, go in.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any, any further discussion? Greg, you had a question before. Can I just?
Um, yes, thank you, Chris.
Yep.
One second. Um, I, I'd be in favor of, you know, moving forward with this plan, it still seems like the most highest use of property. Uh, the comment I wanted to make would be, not for this one per se, because it's not been funded yet, say, by the CIP, but looking at item 4.3.1 and point two, we have a lot of capital projects that are coming in where we've, uh, got a bid and we're looking to accept a bid. What I'm hoping that Public Works and Building Needs can do is when they bring these forward for council approval, that those, each item could be, uh, what was the bid and what was the original allocation? You know, for example, if we said in CIP, we think it's gonna cost a hundred grand, it'd come in at lower or higher. This way we could, as a group, become more cognizant of quality of our estimates and we would be able to manage or at least have, uh, foresight over how much surplus monies may become available over time. So we would, you know, maybe advise or help the mayor and the director of finance, uh, on the use of those surplus monies. But primarily, uh, if each bid should be reconciled with its original funding source, whether it's the EPC, IP, or some other source, and, uh, then we'd start being cognizant of our, uh, the effectiveness of our estimates and how much money may be accumulating in regards to surplus funds. That's it.
Thank you, Greg. Any other discussion on this item? Um, no? Okay. Awesome. We'll, we'll call this to vote. Um, uh, I'll just, again, I won't do a roll call, but I'll just, all, uh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, from Dave Harden.
Any opposed? No opposed. Motion carries 10-0. Uh, next item on the agenda, Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1B.
Uh, motion to approve, do I have a second for that? Mr. Perillo, I see your hand being raised. Okay. I, so I have a second by Mr. Perillo. Um, any discussion on this item?
Uh, it's Greg.
Go ahead, Greg.
Uh, just, um, we may not have it tonight, but can we get for this and the subsequent items coming up, approve, uh, what that funding mechanism was and what was the original allocation?
Mr. Timniak, would you mind, um, following up with Mr. Can on that?
Uh, I'd be happy to.
Thank you, sir. Uh, any other discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for a vote. Again, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Uh, any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Uh, Mr. Poisson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.1C.
Motion by Mr. Poisson, do I have a second?
Second by Dave Harden.
Mr. Harden, I have a second. Uh, any discussion on the item? Okay, hearing none, uh, we'll call for a vote. Uh, everyone, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye, any opposed? No opposed, uh, motion passes 10-0. Next item on the agenda, 4.3.2.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Uh, if it's okay, I'd like to, um, group all the Stratford High Turner change orders together, so that would be 4.3.2A, B, C, and D. I'd like to make a motion to approve those.
You, um, you wanna group them together, Mr. Poisson?
Yes, because those are all the Stratford High Turner change orders. A, B, C, and D.
One, alright, motion by Mr. Poisson, do I have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sheik. Uh, discussion, one of the things I wanted to-
Mr. Chairman. Oh.
Well, hold on one second, I just wanted to bring up, is item B, uh, Mr. Timniak, for, that's the projected pandemic cost. One of the things I wanted to know is, is that something we can look at a little bit further? Or can you, can you just bring that in? Because I, I have no problem with A, C, and D. I just wanted to clarify some of the details.
Uh, yes, uh, Chairman Pia, I actually reached out to Turner Construction and Crack last week to drill down a little bit more on the receipts. Uh, and then I just want to point out, the $160,000 is the projection. They based it upon the early, their early expenses, which was the 116, which has already been spent. My hope, my hope and actually expectation is that it doesn't come in at 160,000 because they have their systems in place now. They purchased, you know, a tremendous amount of product to do what they need to do. So I hope that it's one of those situations where the 160,000 is a, uh, a projection to make sure they have everything covered of, of what they would assume would be a worst-case scenario. We haven't really been in the worst-
Chris, we, you're breaking up now.
Since, uh, since mid May, that, uh, when we, let's not forget, we can keep the project moving forward. Uh, the cost of shutting down the project would far exceed the cost for
Chris.
The COVID-related products to make sure the project, uh, remained on track and we're ready to open.
Okay.
When this began to go.
Listen here, sorry, I've gotten a lot of, a lot of audio issue with, with you, but that's fine. So bottom line is you're tracking that and you're drilling down on it. Um, any other discussion, uh, on any, for, for this item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
Yeah, I'd also like to note that Turner and Crack, as, uh, Mr. Timniak knows and, uh, and the mayor knows, and, uh, they have applied for a hundred percent reimbursement, uh, from OPM for all the COVID-related costs, which would cover the original 160 in item A and the 163 in item B. Uh, of course, those decisions have not been made yet, uh, but we are, like Chris said, hopeful, uh, that we do get refunded 100%, not just the 60% that we'd be getting from state, but 100% reimbursement, so that the 160,000 and the 163,000 would fully reimbursed, uh, because they are COVID-related expenses, uh, by OPM.
Thank you. Just to clarify, that makes me feel better. Miss, uh, Madam Mayor, you had raised your hand, if you want to comment?
Yeah, I was just trying to check that first, um, expended invoice of 160,000 because I had remembered it to be much less with the 163 as, um, the future allowances. So I was just trying to verify that, see if anybody else remembered. I, I thought it was about 116,000, not 160, but I'll, I'll verify it and just double check.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, Chris, it's Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg.
We're, we're considering four items with this.
Mr. Poisson, what was your original motion, sir?
Yeah, the, the motion was to improve A, B, C, and D, but if, uh, if you don't want to approve, uh, B tonight, that would be fine, we could break them back up.
Okay.
I, I read D as being Vicky Soto, not the high school.
Right, it's the Vicky Soto Learning Center at the high school, Greg.
No kidding. Okay, thank you.
Gotcha. Any other discussion on the item?
I would propose, uh, this is Laura Dantcho, District 10, um, tabling item B, if that's-
Pulling that in. Okay. And Chris Timniak, is that something, can we, can we wait on B to get those further drilled down numbers as, uh, Mr. Poisson just kind of mentioned and we could, we can move forward in A, C, and D? Is that possible?
Yes, I don't see a problem with that. I, as Mr. Poisson said, we're trying to get this fully reimbursed. They were sending the number for us just to let us know where we were, um, and, you know, uh, what the, what the future holds.
All right, so I, yes, Mr. Mr. Poisson.
Chris, after, everybody has to realize also that as it states in the agenda here, that this is just an allowance and when it's an allowance, that's just something that they can bill against and if the number becomes lower, uh, they only bill us for the lower amount. It was just an allowance that they would have something for their bookkeeping, uh, to bill us for. If it comes in lower, that would be great. If we want to table it and wait until the end, like they did with the first one with item A, uh, we could go, you know, either way, whatever, whatever the council wants to do.
So, if, if you don't mind, I, I'd like to see item B table. Let's just, even though the appointment request is an allowance, I understand, I'd like to just get those numbers for Mr. Timniak. So, uh, would you like to, uh, Mr. Flork, does he have to restate this, which is, uh, for both?
He, he can restate the, uh, the motion, uh, or alternatively, someone can just make a motion to table, uh, B, uh, and, uh, second it and vote on that and then proceed on the other thread.
Okay, that, that sounds better.
Uh, Bill O'Brien, I'll second Laura Dantcho's motion to table B.
Second to table, uh, item 4.3.2B. Any discussion? We just kind of talked about it.
Discussion on table.
No discussion on table. All right, we're gonna call for a vote. All in favor of tableing item B, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed? Okay, so 10, uh, 10-0, Margot, item D has been tabled. So back to Mr. Poisson's original motion, which was seconded, uh, we had discussion, I'll call that for a vote now, uh, to approve 4.3.2A, B, and D. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Opposed? None opposed, 10-0. Thank you, uh, thank you all. Um, next item on the agenda is 4.3.2E.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Poisson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2E.
Motion by Mr. Poisson, do I have a second to that?
Laura Dantcho.
Second. That's good.
I heard Mr. O'Brien, forgive me, there were a couple at the same time. Mr. O'Brien had the second. Uh, any discussion on this? Mr. Poisson, just elaborate, this was, uh, for the field markings, is that correct?
Yes, this is for the turf field that's going in at the high school. Uh, it's gonna be their PE field, uh, during school, obviously, and then a town field, uh, at night and on the weekends. This is for the line markings on the field. Uh, it's also an upgrade to, uh, field turf's top-of-the-line product, Vertex Prime, which is what we just put in at Benel, which comes with an extended warranty of 10 years, it has a longer warranty. But this way we'll be putting in the same exact turf at Benel and at Stratford High and it'll have the same exact warranty and then the field markings are, have already been distributed and it's PE department and the school and the park and rec committee want it on the field.
Awesome, seems, seems like a win all around. Any discuss, any further discussion on the item?
Thanks.
Uh, Greg Can.
Go ahead, Greg.
How many sports will it be lined for?
Mr. Poisson?
Uh, it's gonna be lined, it's gonna be a U-10 soccer field and a U-10 lacrosse field and it's also gonna have baseball and softball just for an infield. It's also gonna have football lines, although it's not a full football field. The football lines are basically for the Stratford High School marching band so that they can practice. They need the lines to know where they're going, so when they go on a real field, they can know exactly where they are. And it was also for Pop Warner and for the Stratford High Football Team, if they were doing a light practice, they could use that field where they wouldn't need a full 100-yard field. But this way we're getting rectangular playing fields, which we are short of in this town, which would, which would use for, uh, soccer, lacrosse, and football.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call this for a vote. Uh, everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed, motion passes 10-0. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, item 4.3.2F.
Motion to approve, uh, item F, second?
Greg Can.
Greg, Greg, second to the thing, Greg. The item?
Uh, discussion.
No? Okay, we'll, we'll, uh, hold on, Greg, I just, I just called the vote, let me, I just called the- Now, all in favor of, of approving this item, uh, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes 10-0. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Poisson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2G.
Item G, uh, do I have a second for that?
Laura Dantcho, second.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Dantcho. Any discussion on G? Item G, discussion?
Um, Greg Can.
Go ahead, go ahead, Greg.
Just, uh, the difference between G and H. Uh, both are a high-
The difference, sure. The difference in the requirement. Um, Mr. Timniak, are you with me?
I'm here, right? I'm here.
The diff, Mr. Can's question is the difference in the meaning.
Um, I'm pulling up the agenda right now.
These are the bids, right? I didn't even know the answer, but I'll verify it. You're going to the end of the year, verify it.
Now, what's the difference between those?
So, the 330,000 for, 333,000 was for the asbestos removal on the floor, and the 726 was for the actual new flooring.
All right.
Gotcha. Is that good, Greg?
Thank you.
So, any other discussion on the item? Okay. We'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by-
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes ten zero. And Mr. Can, item on the-
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 4.3.2H.
Motion by Mr. Poissons, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. O'Brien, I'll second.
I saw, I heard Ms. Dancho first. I heard Ms. Dancho first. Any discussion on the item? Nope?
I just want, Mr. Chairman, one comment?
Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
I believe this total is significantly lower than we first were told, so that's a good thing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
We'll call this to a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes ten zero. Mr. Town Attorney, Mr. Hudson.
I have no report here.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, 6.2.1, Resolution Regarding a Local Prevention Council. I'll entertain that motion.
This is Laura Dancho, District 10. I entertain a motion that I move that the resolved that the town council is cognizant of the town's application and contract with the Division of RISAP for the local prevention council grant in the amount not to exceed 7,141. I'm sorry, it's dark in here, I can't read it. Fifty-five.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Dancho. Do I have a second?
I'll second, Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien, I have a second. Okay. This is just another good question from the Stratford's partnership and families. So I think we can all agree on that. Any other conversation on this?
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you to, to everybody who continues to get. We'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes ten zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, 6.2.3. This item, this is, I'm just going to, I'm going to propose that we table this for the, for the reasoning that we were not able to, this coincides with the NAA hearing that we were supposed to have tonight at 6:15, which we were not able to do for public, excuse me, due to technical difficulties. So I'm going to ask that we table this tonight. We will get it done in sometime in this month. We have until the end of July, but I'm going to ask that we table that. So it's, am I doing that?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien?
Mr. O'Brien.
I'll make a motion, a motion we table item 6.2.3.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Would anyone like to-
This is Jim Connor for a second.
I got Mr. Perillo on the second. Thank you, Jim, I'm sorry. As I mentioned, this coincides with that, and we had to have that here at first. That was pretty straightforward on that. I'll call for a vote to table. All in favor of table?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Motion passes ten zero to table. Thank you all. Under New Business, item 7.1. Any motion to approve item 7.1?
This is Laura Dancho, motion to approve item 7.1, a bid, bid number 2020-27, for the rehabilitation of five pump stations that it, it, in the amount of 18,000-
Million, million.
Eighteen million, 322,000. And approved by the Water Pollution Control Authority on June 22, 2020, and is hereby accepted and approved.
Motion by Ms. Dancho to approve. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second by, second by Dave Harden.
Mr. Harden, I have you on that as a second. Thank you for discussion. Again, this, as you all remember, we approved this in June at WPA for the town attorney. Flor had asked that we just, the council just put its final blessing on it, so this is procedural, as we did approve this already. Any further discussion on the item? Nope. Okay. We're going to call for a vote.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flor, go ahead, sir.
Could, may, can I suggest that the award of the contract be subject to the state clean, approving our Clean Water Fund application?
So you're suggesting editing the current written?
Pardon me?
You're suggesting we edit the way this is currently written?
Yeah, well, did you add, add to it a proviso that it's, the town's not going to enter into a contract unless it's subject to our Clean Water Fund approval of our, of our application by the state?
I believe we did that at the WPCA, and then we designed for you last year.
Yes.
So is this, you're saying, we, we need to further edit this?
Um, I, I think you should simply make it clear that the, the contract's subject to the approval of the Clean Water Fund application.
I am, so-
I'll amend my motion.
Yep. Thank you, Ms. Dancho. I was just going to ask.
That the 18 million is subject to the approval of the Clean Water.
Funds.
Fund.
Ms. Dancho, Mr. Harden, would you still like to second that? Since you did before? Anybody else can?
I'll second it.
All right. Mr. Perillo, thank you on that. So discussion as amended?
Yeah.
No? So this is a motion to approve the amending of it. All in favor of approving as amended, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any, any opposed? No opposed? Okay. Motion passes ten zero. So, Mr. Flor, we have to move, can we move on, or do we have to vote on, we're good on that, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, item 7.2.
Mr. Chairman, this is Jim Connor. I'd like to make a motion for 7.2 lease agreement concession stand at Short Beach Pavilion.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Motion by Mr. Connor, do I have a second to this?
I'll second.
Second by Dave Harden.
I got Greg on the second. I heard him. Sorry, everybody. Any discussion? Everyone was, was, as you can see, the next page in the agenda is the lease agreement. Read this. Any other discussion on this?
Chris, Greg has a question.
Go ahead, Greg.
Are there any significant terms in this contract that vary from the previous concession stand contract?
So are there any differences between this one and the previous one, is your question?
Yeah.
Significant? Mr. Timniak?
No, there's no significant differences.
Okay. Any other questions? No? Okay. We'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes ten zero. Next item on the agenda, 7.3.
This is Laura Dancho, District 10, on item 7.3. I move that we approve the lease on the town property located at Hickory Woods Lane to Crown Castle Towers, 06-2 LLC for a wireless communication facility. Be referred to the Planning Commission for CGS Section 8-24 review and to a public hearing pursuant to CGS Section 7-163E.
Excellent. Motion by Ms. Dancho, do I have a second to that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perillo. I see you, sir. Thank you. Discussion to this, again, for Ms. Dancho's guy, motion, we're sending this to, this is being voted on, we send to planning for an 8-24 review and a public hearing. Nothing is being approved tonight. This is our due diligence on this. Mr. Timniak, do you care to weigh in on this?
Well, setting it to the public hearing, doing the 8-24 review is the right first step. Currently, Crown Castle has a cell phone tower in the neighborhood, and it is on the EverSource power line. They are looking to move it off of the power line so they can get more access to the pole. They're looking right across the street at our town property. They have been for over a year now. I've been in talks with them. We got together a pretty good contract, which I think is worth reviewing and sending for the public hearing. This would allow the town to receive rent versus EverSource to receive rent, and it would also allow Crown Castle the opportunity to have more accessibility to their tower.
Sounds good to me. We'll let planning look into it. Any other discussion on the items?
Ultimately, it comes back to town council.
Yes, Greg. Yes.
I can add, when it comes back to town council, then, then it goes to the Siting Council, the Connecticut Siting Council for approval as well.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other discussion? Nope. Hearing none. Okay. We'll call for a vote. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any opposed? No opposed. Motion passes ten zero. Thank you all. Next item on the agenda under appointments, 7.4.1, Stratford Housing Authority Commission. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, Bill O'Brien.
Mr. O'Brien.
I move that Joseph G. Crudo Jr. of Stratford Road be and is hereby reappointed member of the Stratford Housing Authority Commission for the term that expires June 30, 2025.
Okay. Motion by Mr. O'Brien. Do I have a second to that?
Greg Can.
Greg, thank you, Greg. Any discussion? Again, this is a reappointment of Crudo, who's been serving the town for years. Any, any further discussion on this? No? Okay. We'll call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.